Thank you, thank you. Good evening fellow commissioners, staff, people in the audience, people at home. When we welcome you to 2015, I'd like to call the first city commission meeting of 2015 to order. And first on the agenda is the invocation and Minister Mark Somerville of the Family Worship Center. Is he here? Okay. Because I talked to him the other day and he was going to be here.
He was there last night.
He probably was here last night.
Someone who could do it.
Okay, I'll do the invocation. So if everybody bowed their heads, God be with us here tonight as we make decisions that affect every citizen in our community. Help us to remember we represent the young and the old, the rich and the poor, the healthy and the disabled. Help us listen to our fellow citizen and do our best for our community. We do appreciate the blessings you have bestowed on El Dorado. Help us work together on our challenges that are before us in the future. Help us to be fair and honest in our dealings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, it is our honor at City of El Dorado to have Ms. Slaton's third grade class at Lincoln Elementary is here to help us with the pledge of allegiance. So if they come forward. Okay, we're going to have a little introduction and we're going to start to my left, so if you take off with a big smile and tell us who you are.
My name's Sarah Dumberg. I live 229 Oyo-Ho Road and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the movie theaters.
My name is Tristan Lucas. I live on North Denver Street. My favorite thing about El Dorado is the baseball diamonds.
My name's Trent. Yeah, my favorite, yeah, I like the swimming pools.
My name is Davion and I like the schools. Payne Gibson, Washington Street. The thing I like about El Dorado is soccer.
My name is Isabella Jackson. I, I live on...
What do you like about El Dorado?
I like the library.
Thank you.
My name is Abigail Vale. I live on West Third, 619. My favorite thing about El Dorado is the water parks.
My name is Mariana Sandoval and I live in 138 Jones Street and my favorite place in El Dorado is the stores.
My name is Nathan Wise. I live...
What do you like about El Dorado?
I like the stores.
Good job.
My name, my name is Lynn Mitchell and my favorite thing is the museums.
I'm Samuel and I live on 301 North State and I like the restaurants.
My name is Caleb Chassain and I live on 333 State Street and I like the good, the good people in El Dorado City.
Good job. Okay. If you all turn around this way. Start us off.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Good job.
Give me your candy.
Thank you, Mrs. Slaton. Colin, was you in that class? Was you in that class?
Me?
Yeah.
Hey, I can tell you what I like most or if you like it too. When I speak out, maybe the first thing I say.
Hey Mike, can I borrow one of your pens?
Sure.
Please. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, there's no proclamations tonight, so we're ready for personal appearance from a Jim Hanna AAA presentation of Traffic Safety Award. So Jim, if you come forward, we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for letting me come here to visit with you a little bit about the Traffic Safety Award from AAA this year. First I'd like to do is recognize Troy Wells, who's with the Kansas Department of Transportation, represents the, he's a law enforcement liaison for KDOT, who helps us immensely with trying to identify and encourage communities that are deserving of, of the award and encouraging them to make application for it. If it wasn't for Troy and the, and the men out in the field doing, you know, identifying the really great police departments, the award program wouldn't be possible. The award's purpose is to encourage communities to address local traffic safety issues in a coordinated and cost-effective manner. Communities can score points for different programs that they conduct in education, enforcement, engineering, emergency response issues. El Dorado scored points for traffic safety engineering advancements for participating in the state's highly successful seatbelt program called SAFE. Really does a great, great job with El Dorado High School and grade schools. Also scored points for CPS inspection station at the Walnut River Festival and the highly effective clicker or ticket programs, impaired driver deterrent and commercial vehicle enforcement programs. Proof of the traffic safety efforts are really clear for this community in the trends that they have in their statistics. Teen crashes for 14 to 18-year-old drivers are really in a freefall, going from 79 in 2009 to 24 in 2013, the most recent reportable year. Crash injuries have been cut by more than half, from 103 in 2009 to 48 in 2013. Even alcohol crashes are trending downward and there have been zero crash fatalities for three of the last five years. That's really a, a strong indication of really good traffic safety enforcement. For their first award, the El Dorado Police Department has qualified for a gold award given to communities that implement programs and, and projects that demonstrate superior effort to addressing traffic safety issues. So I want to first congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, for providing the leadership and the support that's necessary for a good police department to do its work. And then I'd like to let you all know that El Dorado Police Department is one of only 23 police departments in the state of Kansas to win an award from AAA this year. So it's really with great pleasure that we present Chief Seaman, Sergeant John Thompson, and the rest of the El Dorado Police Department staff with the 2014 AAA Kansas Community Traffic Safety Award. If I could present that now.
Take a picture if that's okay? Sure. Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good job, guys. Okay, that's the only personal appearance that's shown there, so we're ready for agenda item number one, public comments. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward and give their name and address and have any kind of issues that they would like to bring up? This is the time that you are more than welcome to come say good things or bad things. We want to hear from them. Okay. Okay, I guess we don't have anything on public comments, so we will go to consent agenda item, which is item number two. Gentlemen, you got any things on that?
I didn't.
I do not.
Yeah. Nick. I had a few things on here. I wanted to, one of the KDOT guys here, I wanted to ask, the trees that we have out on West Central that we planted in the median, is that a good thing or a bad thing? You don't know?
You're asking the wrong person. I've nothing to do with that.
Okay.
All I do is deal with long-term plant seeds and traffic safety stuff.
Fine. That's what I wanted to know.
And Mayor...
Do you want me to find out?
Well, Herb can visit with us.
Oh, okay.
And we'll, we'll do that. I just thought she, she was here, I was going to ask her, so.
Sorry, good.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Mayor, we did, the City of El Dorado worked with KDOT on that project, looking at all of the federal highway safety standards and, and the ASJO design guidelines for roadside instructions, and were permitted by the state of Kansas to plant those trees out in the medians.
Okay. I'm glad to know that, because, and that's getting off the agenda item here. I was, I'll bring that up later, you know, on that kind of thing. I just know when they planted some trees a long time ago, they were picky about how they was known on the outside, and I was surprised they'd let us do it in the center.
Yeah, and, and we laid out site triangles for every turning movement, every drive entrance roadway to make sure we're clear.
I mean, it's, the easy answer from anyone is no. However, that's not what the regulations say. The regulation says it's about creating a condition that doesn't cause a threat to motors.
Yeah.
And so this was a long drawn-out conversation with KDOT. They wanted to know size, variety, we had to provide all that to them. We don't normally plant trees that big necessarily. We did in this case because KDOT asked us to.
Yeah, okay. Going through on the appropriations, thing caught my eye was Butler County Treasure. We pay a lot of taxes, and I ain't going to go through all of them, but the movie theater, we pay a thousand bucks there. Martin Playground taxes. I was wondering, is that something, since that's sitting next to the football stadium? I guess I had a little problem in us paying the tax that goes to the county, or not the county, but to the school district and to the college. Yeah. And they benefit that as much as anybody.
No. What happens is, when something new occurs, the county taxes us, and then we fill out the paperwork and we get it refunded. And, and then, as with any endeavor that involves people, we've had things that have been exempt for years come back onto the taxes and nobody knows why, and so we pay them so they're not delinquent, and so you don't read your name in the tax sale, which we've had them do too. And so, yeah, we pay them and then we ask for them back.
On page 11, this triangle nursery, I noticed that we bought $8,600 and four, $8,600, $8,640 in trees. And then a truck, it looked like that trucking deal went with it for $25.98. And I guess, does our procurement policy cover that, Herb?
Yes, sir.
Did we go out for bids on that?
Yes, sir, we do all the time.
Okay. And that was the, did we do local guys?
Yep.
Okay.
These trees are a tenth of what it would cost locally.
Yeah. I just, I guess I have a problem, trees coming out of Tennessee, that's my problem. You know, even if it costs money and, I don't know, maybe we get smaller trees or something. That's just my opinion. That's $10,000 worth of deals.
Yeah, and oh, and this was all about, the state of Kansas wanted big trees and that's what we bought.
Okay.
And if, I guess if the commission wants to pay instead of $8,000, $80,000, it may not have been 80, that'd have probably been 50, local.
Why would the state want big trees there?
Because the branches, if you have small trees, the branches are low. So let's say you're in a one-ton pickup and you're looking into a tree full of branches, you can't see necessarily. And so, the bigger the tree, the higher the branches are, because we will limb them up so you don't, well, they're maples, and so, not like maybe a blue spruce that you'd leave limbs all the way to the ground.
Yeah. Okay. Stormwater fund, when I look at stuff, this is on page 17, it sure seems like there's a lot of, I see insurance payments coming out of that, and I guess the list of stuff that comes out of this isn't what I would envision for stormwater, just to comment when, when I look at that.
Aren't you just paying stormwater stuff?
Yeah. Are you with me on that? I'm, I'm, that's just a general statement, stormwater is all.
It looks to me like most of it was repairs for a vehicle that we use for stormwater. And then the insurance payment is probably associated with the liability for those employees. And then also for the automobiles and equipment that we use for stormwater.
How many employees we got assigned to stormwater?
I think two or three.
Three or four, okay.
I think two full-time maybe, and then a couple that are like a quarter of their salary comes in.
And I think two full-time that are hired today, but I think he's always short.
It seemed to me like the budget had four, but I could be wrong.
And this is just eye catcher, quick tab, you might comment on this. Page 28, you get into the Christmas party, and that comes out of the water fund and comes out of the sewer fund, I think. But my question is, is there a budget on what, how much we spend?
Yes.
What is that number?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. It's something that, that our chair of that committee knows and discusses with Herb every year.
Is that over $10,000? I mean, there's a, there's 27 items on water fund, it was a pretty good-sized check, and there was 26 on the other ones. So I guess I'd just be interested in how much the budget is for Christmas party gifts. But you might, maybe next meeting, let me know how much that is if you would. Page 29, it says payable amount, Llewellyn CC, December 14th, but it says Commissioners' Gifts for. Can you tell me what that was? It's $360.17. You get time to look that one up, would you? We've been busy and you haven't had time to look at that, so I'm shooting them at you blind here. That's all I got.
Coats, maybe?
Okay, any other?
It's on your credit card, that's why it says that.
Yeah, no, I think it was, I think it was coats.
Oh, for the coat, for the coat drive out at Salve Stormy.
It said Commissioners on there, that's why it caught my eyes.
Yeah, I think that it was from the commission, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Anything else on that, on the consent agenda? Anybody wants to bring it up?
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second? Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Five zero.
Okay, we're ready for agenda item number three, which is a special use permit to allow digital video sign in a C2 district located at 301 North Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. First off, I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to introduce you to Jay Shivers. Jay is our new city planner, so he will be working on the planning and zoning items in the future, so. Comes from us, comes to us from Texas and has been doing a great job so far.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner.
Agenda item number three before you tonight is, Community National Bank is requesting a special use permit to install a digital video sign at their location on North Main Street. The bank has currently zoned C2 and Central Business District, which requires a special use permit to allow the digital video board. This permit was heard at the Planning Commission meeting on December 18th of 2014. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a 6-1 vote with the condition of only displaying static images. There was some discussion as well about operating the sign, not operating the sign between hours of 11:00 and 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and that is part of your zoning regulations currently for signs of this nature that are above a residential zone. In your packet this evening, you see the staff memo and reports.
Hang on just a second. So the recommendation from the Planning Commission just included the, it did not include a caveat about not operating.
Right, but with the C2 mixed, where residential is allowed, we as staff feel that that sign shouldn't operate between those hours, and I think the representatives from the bank at that meeting, Mr. Ral, indicated that that would not be an issue to him. I'm sure he'd be able to speak about that later himself. But included are the minutes from the meeting and staff memo. Also, there is a letter from El Dorado Main Street in your packet, and we did hear from the State Historical Preservation Office today as well. They had indicated that they would like to take a look at this. They, they see no issue with it, with the digital video board because it's on a existing sign base with a non-contributing building to the downtown historic district. They did caution though that video boards are generally considered incompatible with downtown districts. That's all I have at this moment, and stand for any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions. I mean, I reviewed everything and kind of spoke with some folks in regards to the historical district, and I, I just think, I mean, I think it's important to take that into strong consideration, you know, for future businesses when considering this, and that we are a historic district. But unfortunately, no offense to the current sign, but it starts, I mean, technology is moving more aggressively and that now begins to look dated, and I think that'll be probably the future of what we will deal with more. And so I think looking at the artwork with it and the plan for the sign, I think aesthetically it looks nice and will tie in well. So, and of course with the recommendation and the attendance with the planning and zoning, I feel more confident in supporting it.
The fact that it's on existing sign standards too, that, to me, that helps.
And I did, and I forgot to mention, staff did recommend denying to the Planning Commission on the special use permit.
Yeah, and I, and I, I mean, I respect a lot of thoughts kind of on the other end of all this, but I think, you know, through a few conversations had with some Main Street folks and just the historical district, I mean, that's the future of signs. People aren't going to be, I mean, maybe not just everyone's doing it right now, but I think we've got to be going in that direction. So the way that we can do it aesthetically, make it look nice and fit in with the buildings, I think this is appropriate.
And I guess, I'd argue that this is what's happening. If you go to, I'm thinking of Franklin, Tennessee.
Oh, yeah.
Nashville, there's no lights or only floodlights on non-lighted signs, so it depends where you're at, and I think it's, it's your guys' job to decide what it is here, and so, so.
Well, I remember when I was a kid...
Everyone defines their own what, what they want, and it can be anything.
When I was a kid, I thought the coolest sign in town was the big lit letters on top of Walnut Valley that said "Bank." I thought that was the coolest sign I'd ever seen. We've come along, yeah, I know. Broke my heart, broke my heart, but...
I did.
There's a lot of thought went into that, Nick.
Hey, you spelled it right.
You see it from a long way.
Yeah, you could see it from a long way, but I always thought that was cool, but, and I am such a proponent of technology, right Bill? So. Yeah, right, right. So in the minutes from the Planning Commission, Scott, you said that the sign ordinance regulates the brightnesses during day and night.
Correct.
And then the programming for the sign can be set to auto dim at sunset and so forth, just like we do with...
And then, any of these signs in any district in town, before they get a sign permit, they're required to give us the documentation from the company that produces the sign, saying these are the limits it will be set at, and then we reiterate the hours of operation and the brightness.
Scott, could you talk a little bit on why the city would say no? I read this stuff, but just so people at home understand.
I, I think we have the feeling that it's not compatible, compatible with that downtown area. That type of signage tends to distract drivers, and there's concern on that end as well. One of the items we hear the most about, at least in our office, is video boards and the image they create, and we hear a lot of negative things about the video boards that are currently up around town. We've had discussion internally about looking at our sign regulations and bringing them before you all in the Planning Commission for consideration, but we just don't feel that type of signage is appropriate in the downtown district.
Anything else?
But this, but the safety concerns that you have about that type of sign have nothing to do with the downtown district.
Correct.
Right, I mean, it's, you're, you're, so, I mean, by that logic, then that type of signage isn't appropriate anywhere where cars drive.
Correct.
Okay.
And it, and that's, that's a national standard. I mean, you, if you, these signs do their job, and unfortunately, when you're driving a car and you're watching a video board, you're not watching the car.
I have a couple of questions for Colin.
Yes.
Colin, need to name an address, please. Home or business? Which class you're in?
I'm in grade 33 now, I think.
Okay.
Colin Ral, Community National Banking Trust. I'm the regional president at 301 North Main here in El Dorado. Had a few things...
Colin, what's, what's your favorite thing about El Dorado?
Yeah. It used to be golfing, but then I had triplets, so I don't golf anymore. So I guess now it's flying, so, anyway. I just want to hand these few things out.
I think they...
Thank you.
What I handed out is just an example of the picture, kind of like what you see up on the video board, and then also a street view picture. You know, I've heard a lot of discussion by Scott, which, you know, we did talk about it in the Planning Commission about a video board, but, you know, please keep in mind this won't be used as a video board, there won't be anything moving on this. It's not going to be like what you see on West Central with the bright lights. So I don't think it's going to be too distracting to drivers any more than what our time temp sign is, I mean, realistically. I can think back to signs in Lawrence back in the early days with Rusty's IGA, and they, they made them quit doing the, the white lights blinking, but Chase was right as far as the technology is concerned, is, you know, the existing sign we have, you can't buy parts for it anymore, you can't get a maintenance contract on it, the light bulbs, I mean, if we're wanting to go green in this community, it's not going to be having all those light bulbs out there. Because they, I mean, you'd like to see, well, I can tell you what my electric bill, but it's huge on that, just for that time temp sign. This is all, it is LED, but it uses low, low electricity usage, low demands. We did discuss shutting it off between... We did discuss shutting it off between 11:00 and 7:00, but I don't think we agreed upon that in the planning. We said that that was an option. We talked about dimming it at that meeting also. Our neighbor who owns, I think, the only historical building in our block on either side of the road came, and he was in favor of it. And he said that, you know, he would just like to see that against dimmed at night. But his, you know, which is fine, I agree with that. We should be dimming them. They don't need to be as bright at the daytime anyway. There'd be very limited animation, if any. It would just go from one to another to the next, and it would do it fairly slowly, so it's not going to be distracting.
So, your vision for the sign is static images and just rotating between.
And then just fade in and out to the next one. It's not, and you're not going to see real bright lights flashing or anything of that nature. I mean, it's going to be classy looking, kind of like what we try to do with the bank facility. I mean, blend in with the rest of downtown, which I think we've done a pretty good job over the time. That's about all I had that I was wanting to visit on about it. But, and it's, you know, the size of the sign, it's the same height as what the originals, what the sign is now. Say, a little bit wider. If you look at the picture, the top part of it goes past the post just a little bit, but that's it. But the overall height will remain the same.
As long as you keep the time of temp.
We can put that up there too for you, or maybe the time, if that's what you really mean.
I use that every day for a while on the pool. Where I go for the time.
But I do have the gentleman from the sign company too, if you have technical questions, because I don't know the answers to those. But it will be brighter during the day and dimmer at night. We did do one in Newton, which their Planning Commission and their city approved. The first time we went through, we had a few questions, and they did, and we answered them, and we're within 500 foot of the actual historic buildings there, so.
That's what I needed. Any other questions? Okay.
Personally, I think if you're in business, signs are very important. People who aren't in business and don't have any use for a sign always feel signs aren't very important because it distracts from them, so. Whether you have a sign that's the same size as that, lit up with a whole lot of light bulbs, or you got an LED lights that has actually images or words that you can change, I don't know what the difference is. You know, bright fluorescent paint could distract somebody too, so. I think it is an appropriate sign, whether it's right for the downtown, that's a question, that's a personal opinion. If it's an attractive sign, all signs work, so.
And it's going to be done very professionally, like all the other signs we've done. And it's, you know, the one we have out in Benton, it's a lot brighter than what you'll see downtown El Dorado, just because, you know, you're on 54, 254, going 70 miles an hour, and it's, I don't know how many feet back off the highway, it's quite a way, so you got to have that one pretty bright, which it, it's dwarfed by the sign that's at the gas station above it. So, I'm too close to that thing. You know, I think, I think you'll be pleased with what you see from it. I did have a meeting earlier today with a group, and they asked me a question about it that I never really thought about, and they asked me what I thought my customers would think of the sign if it would offend them. And, you know, I'd asked several people, but that, this afternoon, I asked quite a few people and showed them the pictures, asking them which sign they'd rather see down on Main Street, and it was the new sign, not the old sign. And no offense, Chase, on the sign, the old sign is getting pretty bad looking, but, you know, it's weathered 16 years, so.
Right.
And that's the reason why we're looking at replacement.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ral.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Anybody else would like to come forward and have any statements on this issue?
I'm Linda Bains with El Dorado Main Street, and I just want to kind of reiterate what was said earlier, that Main Street has taken a stand, and y'all got the reasons why. It's not against the bank, it's not against Colin. We appreciate the bank downtown, and they've done a wonderful job keeping in line with the look of the downtown. It's just that the, the national Main Street guidelines, they don't specifically address this particular sign because the technology is too new. Businesses have in the past not been able to afford a sign like this for an individual business. So, we just wanted to say that in a historic district, such as Herb said, you, you don't find these types of signs. It does take away from the beauty of the building, and that's why we took the stand that we did. West Central, it's fine, not in the historic district, and that's what our mission is, is, we want to stay true to that mission, which is to enhance our downtown identity and heritage.
Thanks, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
We got one more.
Go on up.
Vernon Boyce, who has the screen from the sign company.
Name it, who you represent.
Vernon Boyce, representing a company called Sign Link.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to speak to the commission tonight. We much appreciate it. I just wanted to make some comments as it relates to the technology, and Mr. Locke here had mentioned the trends of technology and signage, and it certainly is going in this direction with new technology, and it's not going to change. And believe it or not, historic downtown areas have actually embraced this technology nationwide. And if, I can give you examples of that. Anywhere from large metropolitan areas like Atlanta, where they took the old Fox Theater in the last decade and completely renovated it, they actually have gone through two complete renovations, technology upgrades of the historic marquee on that particular theater. And that's just one example of hundreds of historic theaters in downtown districts where they've taken old marquees and they've upgraded, upgraded them with new technology. That one, they actually, before there were, the LEDs were developed, there were miniature light bulbs that they replaced the old large light bulbs like Colin has on his sign across the street, and they put that technology in 10 years ago, and they've since come in and upgraded it to full color video. Now, they don't run video in those districts. They'll, they'll bring up images, and they'll hold them, and then they'll dissolve to the next image. But they use it like a marquee, and I, I'm working on a theater right now in Springfield, Missouri, it's the Historic Fox Theater. They hired us to put the original Fox neon letters up across the top of the theater there, and the Historic Society recommended that the old marquee be replicated and replaced with new digital technology, and we're in the process of doing that project right now. So, the historic districts do embrace the technology, and they do embrace it nationwide, and it's becoming the standard. You know, in a sense, Colin's sign, from a technology standpoint, if you want to look at historically what happens with signage that is old and has old technology, like time temps, they're considered even grandfathered at a certain point, and technology is grandfathered in a lot of these signs, and communities will come in and they'll say, "Okay, you know, we might not in some cases allow it, but that sign's been, had technology for years," you know. So, in cases like that too, I would caution that to allow technology on his sign is simply allowing a technological upgrade of what's already there.
That, that's really, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because I've seen the marquee replacement at that theater in Atlanta, and I think this is something for Main Street to consider, and then as well as us, as we consider these signs. They've got the technology of this on a larger scale.
It's very big.
But the design is even more vintage than it was previously, and they have it adjusted because they can do more with the technology to where it almost, I mean, I guess if you wanted to, you could have your old sign, like those, you know what I mean, but you could have that on that, I mean, the digital.
Sure.
And there, that's an interesting point, because I haven't thought of that. I think we're mostly, we're visioning, like the Beijing sign, it's a little more loud, a little more graphic, moving quickly, but that's an interesting point, because I have seen some of that technology done in a way where it really embraces the aesthetics of what's around it. I mean, it doesn't want to be.
And there's, you know, just because the sign had, the new technology signs like these brand new, and this one's state of the art. I mean, this one is super high resolution. It's double the resolution of anything that you're seeing out there now, even the hospital that has the new full color digital out here. This sign is much higher resolution. It's going to have a much more beautiful screen. And just because, I mean, you, you can buy a car with high technology that, a Ferrari that goes 200 miles an hour, that doesn't mean you're going to use it to break the speed limit with the car just because the technology will allow you to go that fast. I mean, this is kind of that way. The sign's capable of much more than they intend to use it for as it relates to marketing their product. And as far as their logo goes, that, you know, you mentioned using historic images and then upgrading the technology within that historic envelope, that's very appropriate in a lot of cases. They've actually had a logo change in the last couple of years, so they're trying to go in and change the logo, their identification on their signs.
That's cool.
And along with the logo, we've also had the name changed because we did it at a trust department, so that's part of it. The other thing we did, I just thought we failed to mention that, we discussed at the Planning Commission is that we would be willing to use it for, you know, civic activities and such going on in town too. We do that up in Newton. We do it with the West Branch, when people ask, you know, if there's things going on in town, people want everyone to know about, we'll put it up on there, and that wouldn't be an issue.
I mean, I think that the Planning Commission vetted this out, and, and, from the looks of the minute, had a good discussion about it. They did add the condition that there's not any, you know, full motion videos, so you're using it for static signage, and I understand that it's designed to switch between static You know, I mean, I get the, I do get the, the concerns, and have read the letter from Main Street, and I understand those concerns. You know, as I look at this, it, I think there's a clear differentiation between this sign and the intent of use of this sign, and something again, like Chase said, maybe, some of those signs that are on West Central or that you've seen elsewhere, so. I appreciate the work you guys have put into this, and I appreciate the Planning Commission's work as well. And it was a 6-1 vote at the Planning Commission, which means there were seven members at the Planning Commission, and that itself is historic, so.
And I would just, true.
We try to bring that up a crowd everywhere we go.
Appreciate it. But I would, you know, I, I really appreciate you bringing up that theater in Atlanta, and I would encourage the organizations, I mean, as we move forward with these signs and this technology, finding a way that we can work together on what we're going to do with it. Because I think it's not the technology that we're afraid of, it's how far we'll go with it. And I wish I had, like, the stuff from Atlanta, because I could see it, I wish everyone could see it. I mean, because they pretty much took old school signs and replicated them on new technology. So, the look even was more aesthetically nicer than what it was previous, but.
Vernon Boyce, Sign Link again. I, I thank you for that, Mr. Locke, and I just want to state, restate that these are historical societies that are recommending this technology in these districts.
Because that's a historical, I mean, that's one of the most historical theaters in the country.
And I'm sure it's a different type of layout, but.
It is in Atlanta.
Again, our state Historical Society consider incompatible the historic districts, that type of sign, this, this. However, they didn't see a problem with it on existing structures, so.
The other thing that someone mentioned to me was, you know, we see these all up and down Main Street, and, you know, you really go down from, you know, First Street and go down south, and all those buildings are really connected, and they don't have the ability to have a freestanding sign with this type of technology out front of the building. And so, I don't think you'll see that coming to play a whole lot there, but.
Yeah, and, and if it was today, that, that type of sign would not be able to, you know, the height is an issue. So, our sign rates have changed over the years since that was first allowed.
Which would dictate that anyway, it would self-control itself, though.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies. Any other comments, commissioners? I know when I drove around the block and you really look at that, even though that's in the Main Street area, you look at the bank, and you look at the Y across the street and Dr. Latimer's place, it's kind of on the edge. If this thing was any farther south, I know which way I'd lean. This is kind of on, even though it's in the Main Street area, it's kind of a, kind of on the edge, kind of like what Newton is here, except this one's outside the deal here, so. I, I looked at that, and with Mr. Norris being on track with that, and he's the one that owns the older building on that block, and saying, "Okay, who else on that block's going to have an issue with that?" I know the, the bank's going to do something that's going to look nice, no question about it, so. I, I've looked at it and the pros and cons, and that's, that's one of these that's got pluses and minuses, and I personally lean towards allowing Community National to do what they want to do. That's what I'm.
Mr. Marabid, the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 14-013-SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow a digital video sign in C2 zoning district, and that ordinance number G1191 be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Do we need a roll call in there?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We're going to roll call then.
Mayor Faggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway? And Commissioner Chapin?
Thank you.
I'll be looking for that temperature.
He wanted to say warm or cold?
Okay, we are ready for agenda item number four, which is adoption of resolution for community improvement district, CID.
Good evening. Linda Jolly with El Dorado Inc. I bring to you this evening a request for the adoption of a resolution for a community improvement district for HRSP LLC, which will be doing businesses days in. They have, they are under contract at this time. The contract does contain some contingencies. Approval of the CID is one of them for Lot 2, Block 1 in the El Dorado Business Park. They intend to construct a 42-room extended stay facility in that area, and be happy to answer any questions you may have. Any specific questions on the CID, I'll defer to Kim Bell with Gilmore and Bill, who's here with us this evening.
We did a hotel feasibility study a while back to help us understand room needs, and I understand this fits into that feasibility study. My question is, was, was, was the CID, was it a recommendation in that feasibility study, an option feasibility study, or?
The actual forms of incentives are not addressed in the feasibility study. The study was conducted in early 2008 after Holiday Inn had opened, so that was our last new facility, and then, actually, the lodging sector in the study that you saw was also a retail market study. You will see in the study that talks about the opportunity to cluster businesses with the hope that we would have not only lodging in that area, but eventually foods, fuels, and so forth, and that potential.
I was just curious if the, if that feasibility study had any mention of financing.
No, we didn't. It, it doesn't.
Is that the feasibility study in 2008?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions, guy?
I don't.
So, tonight's, tonight's goal is just, just to set a public hearing.
For the community improvement district.
Where we'll have an opportunity to.
Couple of quick ones, because we've never had this in El Dorado before, right?
Not for a single business like this.
Have we ever done a CID?
We haven't done CID. The actual, Kim might need to correct me, but I don't think when we originally considered the Holiday Inn project, it was eligible by single business at the time. You know, you've had other tax financing type of districts in the past, but it's usually required more than one business, and I... I'll let her talk to CID, she knows better than I do as far as history.
Yeah, the CID Act came into effect in two thousand and nine.
Name, Mayandris.
My name is Kim Bell. I'm an attorney with Gilmore and Bell in Wichita and with the City Spawn Council. And the CID Act was not available at the time that Holiday Inn was constructed. What this enables, this particular district would be initiated by petition by the hotel developers. They are asking for a two percent sales tax that will be added to all their sales of retail and services at the hotel. It would only apply to the hotel. And then, as those sales taxes were collected, they would be put into a special fund, and the hotel could then draw on them for reimbursement of project costs that went into the construction of the hotel. They can also use them for other items that are specified by the statute, which would include training costs, promoting tourism, security, there's a laundry list of things that they could use those sales tax for. So they would essentially be reinvesting them back into the building. The sales tax would continue for twenty-two years. There would be no bonds issued, it would be a pay-as-you-go situation, so only whatever money came in, would they be able to recapture and invest in their business.
I got a couple of questions. What's the cost of administration of this? You know, like, we're paying you to come and do this, aren't we? I mean, suburban city.
The developer will pay all of our costs, but the statute allows the city to recoup five percent of the sales taxes that come in, to take five percent off the top, and use those to pay your administrative costs. And that would be worked into, there'd be a development agreement between the city and the developers, which would specify the types of costs that can be reimbursed from the CID, what kind of paperwork they would need to submit to the city in order to get the reimbursement, how often they could do that, would it be quarterly or semi-annually, and then would allow the city to recoup their administrative costs.
Why wouldn't they just increase the room rates and not mess with this?
Well, you'd have to talk to the hotel owners about that. I have been told from other hotels, and I have no way to tell this, but what really is the competitive edge when people are looking for hotel rooms, they're looking for room rate. And they aren't looking at all of the additional tourism taxes and sales taxes and the other charges that come onto your, to your room rate. And so they're competing by trying to keep their room rates as low as possible, and then they, you know, these other charges, when you get your hotel bill, your room rate's usually considerably higher than what the advertised room rate was. I'm not a hotel operator, so I can't verify that.
Makes sense, though.
But that's, that's the rationale that I've been given.
Yeah. Hundred-dollar room would be two dollars, and I just, that part of it. Can the CID be changed if for some reason the business doesn't hold up to its side of the bargain? Let's say the thing did cash flow, or something happens ten years into the game?
Well, again, they're only gonna
If it's something that would trigger us to stop it before twenty-two years?
Well, they're only gonna get sales tax on their own sales and their own, their own production, so if the business is not doing well, then they're not going to capture the sales tax.
Yeah. Is there, for any reason that we can stop that?
Is there any reason that we would?
Well, I don't know, that's why I was asking.
Um, you know, I suppose you could. I've never really had that question posed to me before. You'll levy the sales tax by ordinance.
Right.
You'll levy it for twenty-two years and provide notice to the Department of Revenue, and they'll collect it.
Yeah. Okay. Is it transferable on a sale? If the, if the business sold?
Right. Whatever business was within that district would be able to collect the sale, the two percent sales taxes.
The only business I know of that used this particular thing was Cabela's in Wichita, is that correct? Are you familiar with that?
I believe they do have a CID, and a portion of that, the revenues there were going to pay for the interchange at the highway there.
And then the other portion back to them, correct?
Yeah, I really don't know the details of that, but yeah, there is, there is a CID district. They're becoming more and more common, we're starting to see them with, with retail. You know, some retailers don't like adding the additional sales tax, they think it's a competitive disadvantage, so, you know, I think it depends on the business and what the proceeds are gonna be used for.
I, you know, a thought that crossed my mind, because there's a lot of positives for doing that. The only real negative I could think of is, is the other motels we have in town and the supply and demand, which I don't know, but I would think, wondering if we could send out a postcard or a letter and have a public deal down here, Herb, to where it'd be more of an informational meeting?
Isn't that what we're voting on tonight?
Well, the resolution that you
Off the TV, we're, because what happens is, we'll do this, and if not every one of them hear about this, they're, we're gonna hear about it after we vote on it after the next meet. That's what's gonna happen. And I, I'm thinking to have our best foot forward so that everybody understands what we're doing, that somehow all our motels get notified that this is happening, and if they got any questions, they can come down and ask them, just so we know what's going on. If we got a problem, I want to know about it up front.
You're certainly capable of doing that.
And just, just a thought.
Have you talked to them all?
I, I think you ought to invite them to a meeting and let them ask any kind of questions they want to ask, not on TV, but
Right, I mean, they're
And then they can come to us at the next meeting, and then what they don't like about that's when we can hear that. But at least let them get the information so that they can make their judgments on how it's gonna affect their business and how that mix comes into what we're doing, so.
And then there will be published notice in the paper for two weeks, so the general public will have, you know, the notice as well.
Yeah. And I understand that, but I'm telling you
Oh, I, I understand.
When Holiday Inn came around, I heard all about that after it was over with, and I'd rather they all know about it up front. So, is that something, how many motels we got in town, Lynn?
We'll be happy to make sure they're aware of the public hearing.
And, and I'm saying
And if you want
Not, not a public hearing, just a public information deal, where we sit down and we have them, and they're invited to a meeting, and here's what's before the commission, and we want you to know about what's going on, do you have any questions? And then they'll have a little time to think about it, be able to come to the meeting. If we don't do that, they'll also come up here, maybe hear something of gossip and don't know what the actual facts are, and that wouldn't help any either. So I'd rather have correct information in some kind of informational meeting.
How many hotels are in town, Lynn, to please?
We have three branded facilities and, I'm gonna have to count, I think four non-branded, so seven.
So seven? So you think we could spend seven stamps and mail every one of them a letter and tell them that we're gonna have this public hearing?
We'd be happy to do that.
If we're afraid some of them, although I doubt in a town this size, the word hadn't hidden out, but if we want to let those people know for sure, maybe we could send them a letter?
I'd be happy to do that. We also have visited with some of the hotels about using the same tool for projects they've considered, so it's not foreign to everyone, but we have them across the board and talked to them about it, so we can.
And, and I guess, I've been told that these owners have went and visited with lots of the other non-branded, no, in branded facilities, owners, and, and asked them if they want to be a partner, if they want to know about this. So I think there is communication going on air, but there's not a thing in the world that would stop us from having an open house to talk about this in a week, before you're ne, before you're gonna hear it again in a month.
Or the public hearing, just, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's a month away.
And either they show up and they take advantage of it, or they don't.
Or they don't.
So we gave them a fair shot.
I don't, I don't care, I don't care to do that.
I don't mind doing that, if we do it before, you know, and don't drag it out.
I mean, we, I think we need to move forward with the public hearing. We've set something up between now and then for everyone to come down for informational. So I'm gonna move to approve resolution number twenty-seven fifty, a resolution setting a public hearing to discuss the creation of a community improvement district within the city of Eldorado.
Second. Got a motion and a second and discussion? Or we're gonna set up an informational meeting? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, ladies.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think I'm gonna probably try to do it the first week in February, and I'm gonna, because the, these two end up weeks in January are pretty busy.
If, if you do that, I'd like to know when that is, too.
Yes, and I'm thinking, and I think we'll do it of an evening, and I'm not sure, we won't do it about seven, just to
Mr. Mayor, was that a five-zero?
Five-zero. It's New Year Day, keep happening.
And if I'm correct, every hotel or motel has the opportunity to get a CID for themselves at any point in time. So this isn't an exclusive thing, right?
No, and the, and I know that we have talked to other, been, we've talked to other hotels about using NRP, and in fact, two cycles ago, NRP was actually extended to commercial projects specifically so it could be reviewed for a hotel that needed to make improvements. And so we, we absolutely, well, I mean, the CVB or CTC, depending on what you want to call it, meet monthly, is that right? Meet monthly, and that's primarily lodging people and tourism people, and so absolutely have a lot of contact with those people, and, and so I think that they know it, but to be redundant doesn't hurt a thing. I don't, I think it's fine. And they may never have heard about CID, but they absolutely, IRBs are commonplace, you do them kind of regularly. CID will be a new tool to Eldorado. NRP is been around a while now and, and is local, and so not as cumbersome maybe as state and federal programs, and so, any, anything is possible.
Yeah.
Well, mostly.
I know that study was oh-eight, and that's seven years old now, and I, they know their business better than anybody, and how that affects, and we all had a great time because of Holly Frontier, the big turnaround, but what's an average year gonna do? I don't want to wake up some morning, have two or three empty motels around here, where it's, the government shouldn't be at an unfair advantage in that kind of deal, so I don't know how they're gonna feel about it, I'd like to hear what they think.
The, and the other point I was gonna make, and now it's gone, sorry.
Okay. I know how that goes. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number five, State Department in the Engineering Department. We're gonna talk about Twan Street, right, Scott?
I'm gonna talk about what now?
Twan Street, I see.
I'm, I'm gonna make this brief for as long as you, as you guys want it.
Okay, brief's good.
Brief's good.
All right, so here we go. I'm gonna present some of the highlights of the Engineering Department for two thousand and fourteen, and hit on some of what this department and the functions and roles it has with the city of Eldorado. The Engineering Department carries a mission statement that all projects have a common requirement of taking concepts through completion. Growth and continued improvements are our future, and we will strive to provide comprehensive, responsible services that are in the best interest of Eldorado. And I think that mission statement really hits it on the head of what we do over there, and the pride we take in our community, and the pride we have in serving our citizens and customers. We have four, four divisions over there in the Engineering Department, Engineering Building, Planning and Zoning, and Code Enforcement. The Engineering Division is responsible for the planning, contract administration, overseeing of construction projects on any streets, traffic signals, sanitary sewers, storm drains, water mains, drainage projects, city parks, rail, and pretty much any improvement or major repair of any of the city's assets or infrastructure. Some of the projects completed in two thousand and fourteen, and some of these have not been completed, but work is done, is, we have the two new subdivisions, Belmont Heights Third and Chris Ninth, completed the paving of Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue, worked on a water study for Prairie Trails with MKEC Engineering, worked on the extension of Rural Water District line to Butler County Rural Water District Number Four, CDBG Sewer, improvements, we secured state funding for improvements at the intersection of Topeka and Central, that'll be a geometric improvement project to help the overall traffic safety on that corridor of Central Avenue. Got the installation of the signal at Sixth and Haverhill. Finally got it started and going on the paving of Twana, that's something we've been working on for a number of years, and with you all's help and, and the rest of staff, we finally got that going and, and are almost set to have that project out for a bit. Did some storm sewer work on Locust from Gordy to Maine. A big project of ours was surveying in all of the city's storm sewer infrastructure. That's over two thousand structures in town and eighteen hundred different pipes. Were involved with the floodplain stormwater management, did the installation of pedestrian path on North Main, and then I have a list of paving projects as well. The Building Division, which is basically supports the safety and quality of life for the residents of Eldorado and visitors of the city of Eldorado, through the enforcement of building codes, inspections, plan reviews, and making sure that minimum housing standards are met for our citizens. I put up there our permit totals for two thousand and fourteen, and next to that, you'll see the value, so that is the, the dollar amount the project, the value of the project. One that stands out to me is we saw a big spike in December of new housing, residential housing starts, so that's very good. We're up, we were up to ten for two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and fourteen, we've, we've really worked hard with Scott Peach and our building official to enforce and get more proactive about rental property and life safety features in rental property, specifically smoke detectors, GI, CI outlets in wet locations, and we were able to work with and get about thirty-five rental properties upgraded. We feel very good about that. Also worked to, to get rid of, and in the process of getting rid of eight dilapidated structures that needed to go. The NRP renewal, which you all are very familiar with, was also completed in fourteen. The Planning and Zoning Division, you know, we try to manage the development of the city of Eldorado using planning principles, and that promote a rational and economic and really environmentally efficient use of, of land that we have, that we want to allow Eldorado to grow in a consistent manner with the goals of our community as a whole. And that's why you have all the appointed planning commissioners and BZA members, and to have that process go through like it did tonight, and, and hear the will of the community, and you all being able to make the final decision on that. Before you write there is our two thousand and fourteen zoning changes and special use We do a couple of those, are, with our inter-local agreement with Butler County, that are outside of our city limits with, but are within our extraterritorial growth area. And Code Enforcement, that's the last division of the Engineering Department, and there, and that's, and I should have introduced my staff as we were going along, but Sarah Hagan is, is our Code Enforcement Officer, and she is responsible for addressing nuisance and property maintenance concerns, and works to strives to provide a safe and healthy environment for our community. And the main goal of, of this division is to resolve violations, reduce neighborhood deterioration, and sustain property values and create a healthy and safe community. And what you see there tonight is two thousand and fourteen total violations and complaints, so those are a thousand twenty-six. Those are either violations that Sarah witnesses out in the field or phone calls Those are either violations that Sarah witnesses out in the field or phone calls that she receives. 1,026. And then to the right, you see the number of citations written, which is 386. Those are people that did not, were issued a ticket, that had not met the, met the requirements of the notice they were giving on either tall grass or vehicle complaints, trash complaints. So I tried to make that brief. We are, we are all proud, and there's seven of us. Myself, Amanda Stalnacher is our, our administrative assistant, and she's the do it all gal over there. I'm sure you all are very familiar with Amanda. And Jay Shivers, who was introduced tonight, just came on board with us as our city planner. Jay comes to us with a lot of experience in education and city planning. Scott Peachin is our building official. And then Josh Potter and Eric Tharp are engineering technicians. I stand for any questions you may have, or we all thank you and appreciate our jobs and really love what we do. Yes?
Scott, when you look at code enforcement, it says animal complaints for. How would that, why would that fit up into there? And I guess what's a warrant and what's guilty? There are small numbers, but I just.
There, there is a, a warrant is issued, I believe, if they fail, fail, failure to appear.
If they're cited, Mr. Mayor, and they don't show up.
Okay.
Or a warrant might be issued.
That's the warrant, okay.
And, and the guilty is issues that have gone to trial? Is, is what I, it, complaints are code violations that have gone to the trial and the, they have been found guilty.
Is that, is that city court that, when we say trial?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How does a person complain? And, or how does, how does Sarah know when to go out and to look at something? Is that based on a complaint?
The majority of them are. She does drive them around as well and witness.
Because I've seen times where something was left go all summer long, and then there's somebody else that's been after them all the time.
Well, and that's not, and that's not to say at all that we're not trying to get after them. There's a process in there that they're allowed, that we give them notification by certified letter. They have a certain number of days to, to say mow it if that's the case. If they decide not to meet that, then there's another lagging time by when it goes to city court and a citation is issued. If that's the case.
And then the judge is involved. And when someone comes, well, actually first they'll probably talk to Jim and try to work out an arrangement. Because our interest in it is getting them mowed.
Getting them mowed.
And so unfortunately, we get, we get promises that are not kept. And so I don't know of any example where someone has asked me about a property that wasn't in the system.
Pam, let me ask you this. What if you have an older person that lives next to a property that never mows, you know, and they try to keep theirs up? If that person was to call down and tell Sarah about that, is her name used in that process? Does, does anybody ever know who complained? I've had people ask me that, and I.
And the way we look at it, Mayor, is if you call us and say, Fred Smith's grass is high, can you go to 411 North Main and look at it? We go, look, you're not the complainer.
Right.
We are. The city of El Dorado saw the tall grass. Now, we went there because someone told us you need to run by.
Yeah.
And so we don't disclose that. We, it's us. And so when, when we're asked that, and, and the normal argument is, I have the right to address my accuser. And our response is, we're your accuser.
Yeah. Well, 377 grass complaints is a lot. Sarah keeps busy with that.
She does.
So I would hope for 2015 that we can all, and I'll say it, might keep our yards mowed. And help your neighbor if they have trouble. Let's, let's see how good a neighbor you can be in 2015.
I mean, I know properties in El Dorado that the neighbors mow the grass.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, there's a house on post that I don't think it's settled yet, and, and the, the neighbors come and mow it. Because we're not, I mean, our time we go through court, it would be taller than they want it. So they just go mow in front. And I don't, I think we had to go in the backyard and empty the pool last year and clean stuff.
Fence and fix fence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so we had to go, we had to do more than we wanted. But the only reason it looks good is because the neighbor mowed it.
Yeah. Any other questions, guys?
Thanks, Scott.
Scott, I'd like to give you my appreciation for the last eight years that I've been up here, how your department has come together, coalesced into a very well-oiled machine of excellence. I hear that from many, many people. So kudos to you.
I appreciate it, and we do all as well. Thank you.
When's Tuana Street scheduled to be done, Mayor?
We are, we are about ready to bid it, and it'll be under construction spring and, and with the goal of getting it completed before next fall.
Next fall, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, agenda item number six was the finance department. And we thought we was going to run too late tonight, guys, so is that okay? We was going to do that next time?
That'd be fine, okay. Perfect.
Okay.
And I'll get her back here.
Okay. So we're going to pass agenda item number six. And we will go to agenda item number seven, which is the interlocal agreement with USD 490.
21 years ago, the city and USD 490 went in together and built the gyms on the high school. So on the northeast side of the high school, built those three gyms.
What most people call the rec center.
In fact, that's its name, rec center. The contract lasted for 20 years. At the initial, in the initial agreement, the city paid two-thirds and the school district paid a third. If I remember right, it was either 66/33 or 60, no, it's, no, 6, I think it was a third, two-thirds. In exchange for us paying more, the school district paid all the utilities and did all the maintenance. That agreement has expired. At the end of the term, we both became 50/50 owners and really have treated like we're 50/50 owners since I've been here. And the, so what Sue and I have talked about and would like you to consider is going forward, the city will pay its share of the utilities, but other than that, the contract will remain the same. And so that's the only difference. And so they'll still do maintenance and we'll still share in revenues and, but we will pick up, start paying part of our utilities.
Well, I think it's a great partnership and has been a wonderful asset to the community. And I think, I mean, obviously I don't utilize it like I did five, 10 years ago, but I know a lot of people still do. So this sounds fair, and I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and sign that and move forward. Unless anyone has any other thoughts?
I think it has been a great partnership. I think there's, it's, it's also served, I think, as a foundation to help build additional partnerships and relationships with 490 and the city. And, and it's given us some opportunities. So it's a great facility. My daughter and her friends all use it out there and do a lot of, a lot of people in this town. So I think it's a good agreement. I think it's something to move forward with.
I think it's a great deal.
I wanted to make a comment. 21 years ago, this thing was stuck in the mud and couldn't get it off center. And there was some people that got together to make this happen, and one of them was Matt Cross. And I remember some of the meetings and what they went through, but you look over the last 20 years, look what we've had out there. So I mean, it's, it's been exciting with that and shows how we're working together. The only question I had was, have we looked at UC's percentage of city versus school? Or is it a 50/50 deal, or where are we at on that?
If I, no, if I were being, my fear when, when we started talking about this is that we would pay more. That we'd get 50% of the maintenance, 50% of the utilities. And, and as it is today, there's three gyms. USD 490 gets two of them all day long. The city of El Dorado gets them from 5:00 to whenever we want to close, every day and on weekends. The third gym is always the city of El Dorado. So just looking at that, if they, we're over 50% because we have one all our own. And so we probably are two-thirds users. Now, I think that the, and again, to build on your point about cooperation and getting people to, it takes commissions to make these things happen because people like me will get stuck in the weeds figuring out all the, in the little stuff. And so I think that this had the opportunity to be a problem, it wasn't. And I think we've always looked at it like we're partners and we're serving the same customer. And so during the high school remodel, the school district approached the city about putting the band or the music department in that third gym and take it out of service from the city for a year. And we agreed to do that. And so I think that it's all about having great communication with that other entity and working together. And, and so you work through problems. I think, I appreciate the school district's offer on this, and I think it's great and.
That's good to hear from you.
Yeah, no, it's, this isn't near as bad as I thought it could have been. And the other thing, we both are working to control our utility expenses. So we're on the same page there. I mean, it's something we can impact. So I, I like them for a partner. I think it's been, well, you, you got three gyms that are busy all the time instead of having three gyms that are not busy all the time.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the city manager to sign that amendment to the interlocal agreement as proposed.
Second. Got a motion, second? Is there any discussion? Nick, you got anything to put in there?
No, I think it, I think it's a, it's a good plan and a good partner.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And thank you to the district for being a good partner in that.
I think they're going to take it. I think it's going to their board next week, I guess.
Okay, we're ready for agenda item number nine. We have some changes, so I hope I'm right on this one for new business discussion items.
Yes, sir.
Next on everybody's list.
Number eight.
We added.
Okay, sewer improvement. Okay, that's the one we slipped in there at the end.
Right here.
Yep.
Right here, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, and good news, and we apologize for the short notice on this. But we did find out on Friday that the city of El Dorado was awarded a $500,000 grant, $500,000 grant from the Kansas Department of Commerce for a community development block grant for sewer improvements in the neighborhood of, just kind of north of Skully School. We've spoke to you about the issues we have in that neighborhood with undersized sewer mains, sewer mains that have just basically deteriorated to the point that we cannot maintain them and has caused a lot of issues. So what we're asking you to consider tonight is a resolution that would authorize the city manager to sign and submit all documents related to the application for a state revolving loan for the city's share and portion of the project. The project is estimated cost right over $1 million. So the city of El Dorado's portion of the project is estimated pre, pre-designed at $577,600.
That's the loan amount, right?
Yes.
Right.
And one, one thing that'll be different about this project than other sewer projects that you've approved before, it is a block grant and where homeowners' lines are in need of repair, this will do work on private property at no cost to those homeowners. And so we're not the only ones with problems in this neighborhood. So are the homeowners, and this is, you know, normally we go in and we do our stuff and we quit at the property line. Well, this time, this project, that does not occur.
And I will tell you too, we were, the information was shared with us that this project was awarded the highest points of any project in the state, so.
That's exciting.
It is.
Well, whoever, whoever applied of our staff that thought to apply for this grant, congratulations because it's like bending over and finding half a million dollars.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number 2751, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and submit all documents related to the application for a Kansas water pollution control revolving loan fund with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in second? Any discussion? One quick question, the loan, usually those are low-interest loans too, aren't they?
Correct.
So you got any idea what rate, 2%?
It's, it's right over the existing revolving loan. It's 2.18%, if I remember, don't hold me to that, but it's, it's 2.2, 2.18's more in there.
Yeah. So this is exciting, you're doing a million-dollar infrastructure deal that we get half the money and the other half's low-interest loan.
We want to, it took a while to get back in good and show the state we knew how to manage a loan. We've done that now, and I just apply for one every year. Because we've closed, this will be the only one we have open at the moment.
And the reason, the last one we were awarded was in 2008. And then that was a sewer improvement, and then we had the BG Barton project that tied up some, some Department of Commerce money for quite a while that did not allow us to apply until this year.
But we, you ought to start seeing one of these every year because you can have two open at a time.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now we are ready for agenda item number nine, new business discussion items. Who would like to start, Steve?
I'll start this in. curb the, we, I was all excited about Olive Street getting resurfaced. And here in the last few, last month or so, the thing has been kind of disintegrating underneath our tires. So I'd kind of like to let the public know what is going on on that particular street.
You bet. We noticed right af, right after construction that it, it was having some failure issues. The, it turned off cold almost immediately. And so we talked to the contractor, they're going to come back in the spring, if I think that's right, didn't it Scott?
Yeah.
And, and redo it. They recognized that they had a failure issue and, and so they're coming back to fix it.
Okay, that's all I got. And hope everybody is enjoying the new year of 2015.
I wasn't listening very careful, but did you say that there wasn't water in the roller? And so they're waiting for it to warm up? I was reading.
That, that was another issue. That was just a issue that they had on site. What we're seeing now and what we saw immediately after construction, within a week or so, is a loss of binder in the asphalt to the aggregate. And, and they did come out and make a couple of emergency patches where they came out with a small mill machine and laid some new hot mat down in some areas, but are fully aware of, that they will fix. of, that they will fix it. The city does require maintenance bonds on any of these type of projects, so.
They knew that was just a Band-Aid.
They knew that was a Band-Aid. And that was a, called them up and said, hey, you guys need to go over and do this right now, and then what's your plan for next spring when it warms up?
Perfect, okay. Good point.
Good to be back. I think we're going to have a, I think this coming year's going to be a great year. Lot of neat projects going. This one we just voted on is going to be really great. And I just look forward to a really good year. We have an election this year, and looking forward to working with whoever is up here with us, new commissioners or...
You're going to give me for any of the two, buddy?
I know, I've just been counting the minutes, dude. So, anyway, that's all I got.
I'll kind of key off what Nick said. We are having an election this year, so three of our seats up here are up for election. I just encourage people to call the city, talk to Tabitha if you've got questions about our form of government or ways that you can help serve in the community and get some paperwork and file for a commission seat. We've got two commission seats and the mayor's seat open, so it's a great way to get involved. It's a great way to be a part of kind of driving some things within the city. So, that's all I'll say about that. I think that the only two things, I had two things. So, late last year, we, I talked a little bit within the competency plan about bike paths, and you said that maybe over the winter, you guys were going to try and get some of those on-road bike paths kind of established on McCullough or on Country Club and some of those other areas. Have you guys made any progress with that?
I can't tell you where Public Works is on making the signs. They do, they do have the design.
And the, actually, you're talking about bike signs?
Bike signs.
Yeah.
Shared roadways, yeah, not boring bike paths, but shared roadways for some of our wider streets to create a bike lane.
They have created three different styles of sign and message, and I think they plan on bringing them to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
And so, yes, they are, and yes, they have the templates done.
Good. Well, I just remember we just, we're going to work on that over the winter, so we'd be ready when spring hit.
We have templates.
So, in your manager's report last week, we talked, you talked a little bit about some properties that the city has, and kind of how we wanted to go about getting rid of those, whether it was through sealed bid or auction. I wonder if you could speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
Kind of discuss that.
We have some property that we've acquired, mostly that had houses on them that needed to be torn down. We don't, we don't have a public, the public purpose was to get rid of a structure that was failing or failed.
Right.
And I think the vision of the commission is to get it back with a nice house on it and help the neighborhood. So, we're looking at, do we have an auction? Do we have a sealed bid? When we thought about sealed bid, we thought that step one would be that you'd sign a development agreement, and it would say you're going to build a house in a year, and it would stipulate you, to bid on it, we didn't think you ought to be delinquent in any of your taxes. We don't, didn't think you should have code violations, married to code violations. And so, we didn't, we didn't think we ought to sell them so it'd be speculative for an owner that it was about putting the house back on it. And so, knew we could do that with sealed bid, didn't think about it with an auction until we visited. And so, I don't know why you couldn't do that with an auction either. I think an auction would generate more money.
I do too, and it also continues with our, our kind of belief in transparency, so I think that we could still set those standards in the sales contract and auction contract. But I guess my other question would be, in addition to those, and I guess just some background, we've talked a lot up here about infill and the need for some revitalization in our neighborhoods. And I think that these lots, these eight lots specifically, really fit that category. They'd be infill lots, they'd be opportunities for some neighborhood revitalization, which we approved the NRP at the end of, or last year. So, I think there's that opportunity. If we do an auction, are there other properties that we would look at including in that auction in addition to those infill lots?
I think that the city owns a tract of land on the south end of Bella Vista, and if we could get rid of that, it's pretty, I think it'd be a good place to have a subdivision or a house or something, but it's currently off the tax rules, there's no reason for us to hold it. The, so I'd say that. We also acquired Kreiler Edition. It has buildable lots today on it that are platted sitting on streets, and again, ought to have houses on it, and so, maybe get rid of those too. So, yes.
I mean, all of us at times up here have talked about our goal of getting these properties back on the tax rules, and I think the best way to do that is to set some conditions in the sale that there's going to be, you know, the infill is going to happen, or we're going to be able to revitalize or do some new builds and kind of meet the standards. Plus, it also would feed into some of the other programs that we've got in our housing committee. I don't know if there's any spots available in that area for building new houses, but those kind of come on and off as well. So, great opportunities. I just wanted to kind of touch on that since you did mention that in the manager's report.
Well, and that was, I'd kind of like to get a preference out of you all about, do you have a preference about sealed bid, auction?
My preference is auction. I think that it makes it available to everyone, and it, like I said, it really kind of guarantees transparency in how we move forward.
I'd go for auction. Well, I'm available, either way's good with me, but putting stipulations with no timelines?
Same idea.
You're putting stipulations on the sale of this property, that it has to have a house built on it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, those were just some of the ideas that Herb floated in the kind of sealed bid aspect, and when I called Herb, I said, why couldn't we do that? If you did it at an auction, it would still be, you could build that into the sales contract where you say if you buy the property, you have to terms and conditions. Start construction within a year or whatever.
Or what?
We'd have a right, we'd have a right to buy that. We'd have a clawback.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the vision, and this is your opportunity.
Well, that's just, I'm just kind of concerned with the, it's nice that we push it to push somebody, but economic issues could come up that allow not, allow that to happen, and then we've got big, bad government taking land away from somebody that paid for it, even though they supposedly get the money back.
Taken away, we bought it back. It's not taking it away.
I don't know. Just a little uncomfortable with that particular way.
I've always liked to have a plan, and I've said this four or five times, I'd like to visit with the guys from Hutch and see what they charge to come in and give us an idea of housing stock. And I've never been able to sit down and visit with those people. Hi?
Can you talk?
Now, the reason I'm saying that, the less property we own, the better. And I think, I understand why we bought them. I think we got to be, let's just say we sell them at auction and find out that a year from now, we want to do a development in there of multi-housing or something, you know? And then all of a sudden, you got a guy with some, three or four lots he bought for $1,000 bucks, now wants $20,000 piece for them. So, I'm just saying some type of plan that says what we're going to do about housing stock in town, existing housing. And that's, that's kind of, and I think you got to start with a plan. And just buying and selling as they go with this, we go buy it cheap, we go tear it down, they buy it cheap, you know, and it might sit there empty, what are we going to get out of that kind of deal?
And that's, I mean, I think that's the whole motivation for requiring they build on it.
Yeah.
And so, there's no, if, the, we could, we could absolutely use other tools to get property cleaned up and have no public expense other than court time.
Yeah.
The reality is that never happened. You can't get blood out of a turnip. And so, we would absolutely, if we resorted to the stick and not the way we're doing it, these houses would still be standing.
Yeah.
And so, I think that if you, you have to see value in not having a house ready to fall over sitting on a lot. And if you don't see value in that, then, then we have no business buying them and tearing them down to fix that problem. And then I think if you sell them back, and again, under this, kind of what we're talking about, you're going to go from a house that's fallen down to a new house. And so, most of these are one lot in a block. So, you couldn't parlay them into more unless we held them. If we held them and did a whole block or did a bigger area, we could. I think if you're going to think about that, and there has been discussion about that in, at Inc., you can always use a condemnation tool and condemn them and pay for them, go through condemnation, and then that way you can have enough property to do something, do something bigger. But I think most of these, it's a block that's full of single-family homes, and now there's one smooth lot where there used to be a house falling down, and the goal is you put a new house in there, and now you've, now you're helping reestablish that neighborhood. You've gone from bad to good, and the new one's going to pay taxes.
And I understand that, but then you got eight houses around it that's going to be in that shape in the next five years, and you're trying with this one house, and maybe something else is going to develop for the whole block.
Which I think's a great discussion for the housing committee.
Yeah.
But right now, we're really just talking about lots we own and selling them.
Okay.
Okay, not trying to rebuild the whole.
Process.
Yeah. So, what I'd like to get answered is, is, one, if Joe buys a lot from us or was high bidder, in the, in the, in the title itself, we put a clause in there that says if you don't have a house on it by a year, we automatically retain it?
No, in the contract, it'd give us the ability to, the purchase contract, it'd give us the ability to get it back.
Which is, as I'm reading, I mean, it's common practice in towns our size and smaller throughout the Midwest for community-owned property, property that they're trying to develop in, with infill standards, like city-created infill standards.
If the, the lots that we sold in the business park all had a one-year build on them, didn't we? And so, it, again, it'd take action to take it back. Someone would have to say those take it back. We, I mean, we don't want to own it, we want it to stay on the tax rules. And so, I think if there was something that, I think if they were talking to us and had a building permit, we're not going to get excited, because the goal is again to get a structure on it. The goal isn't to cost.
Whether it be a garage or a house.
I don't, I don't.
Where do you draw the line?
He said rep a house, because I don't, when I read those things, did we say a house or did we say something?
Yeah, if it's zoned residential, it would have to have a dwelling unit on it. The only, if a budding neighbor purchased it and built a garage on it and abolished the lot line, then that would be appropriate. But the only way to allow just a garage would be a budding landowner that owned it.
And I think.
And that's, and that's if we set the standards that way. I mean, this is all.
Right.
About creating those standards for what we want, what we want as far as infill in these properties.
Right.
But in the question of whether we put them up for auction and then put all these standards in, I'd like to have these questions answered and addressed.
I don't disagree with that.
Before we go with that, so.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, the basis of this conversation was I'd rather see us have an auction than closed bid.
I agree with that.
And I do too.
And then I think that as we've all discussed numerous times about the need for quality infill in El Dorado, this gives us an opportunity to help drive that, and we can help build, we can build those standards, have the discussion with the housing committee and amongst the commission and other people as well, but help build those standards for some of the infill that we want to see accomplished in El Dorado.
Okay.
Am I up? You're up. Or I don't, you got your answer?
Are you in business?
Oh, I don't know. I think we're still just.
I mean, that'd sound like consensus.
I mean, that was the question I wanted, I wanted to hear about.
Yeah.
And then, the standards are in draft form that we're working on, they're not ready for you yet.
Okay.
I suspect they'll be ready in a couple of weeks though, probably. We'll get it, you'll probably see them in February, and then you can vet them there.
Do you think, Dave, my question would be, do you think that it would be beneficial for those draft standards to go to the, that housing committee and get some input from them as well, or do you want to just come back to us, or what's your thoughts?
I think we pretty much vet it.
Okay, I was just curious, wait, okay.
Should I go for city planning?
I'm going to say that planning isn't really about, they've already done it, they've already done their job by having standards. That this is going to be about policy of property disposal that doesn't, that didn't have anything to do with them other than you and them created the standard that told us to buy it and tear it down. And so.
Just making sure, make sure you guys are on the same page we are.
I think they meet next week though, don't they, Scott?
They meet this, this Thursday.
You may tell them what we're doing, see what they say.
I just want to reemphasize the election and also throw out some dates, but we, you know, we kind of have a little bit of stuff stirring, but we could definitely use some more interest. So, if anyone has any questions at all, I'd encourage them to call Tabitha, our city clerk at city hall. The deadline to file is next Tuesday at noon. And so, I'd really encourage you, if you have any interest, to get in touch with her by the end of the week, so you have time to kind of sort through some of that. Feel free to reach out to me, I'm sure some of the other commissioners would welcome that as well, if you have any questions. Also, voter registration for the primary is, you got to be registered by February 10th and registered by March 17th for the general election. So, again, if anyone has any questions, feel free to contact us. I guess all I have real quickly is, Mike, I know you, BHI is looking at a new property, and I went and looked at it, I think Mike has looked at it, I don't know if anyone else has. But they really kind of were wanting to maybe get some input from some of our senior staff before we started that whole rodeo again. And I think that would be appropriate since they're looking to kind of use that as some value before we started that, if we all maybe went and looked at it together, a couple of us, and just kind of dialogue with them before everything really gets going with all that.
Okay, I'll give you some bad news.
Okay.
That's called ex parte communication.
Okay.
Way to go, Chase.
There you go.
You, and, and you didn't know about that, and I apologize.
Yeah, what?
And I'll, and here's, here's the problem with going and looking at it in advance. On matters like that, you are acting as almost, you're quasi-judicial, and the only way that cities and counties can do zoning is with this quasi-judicial process.
And, um, the only way that cities and counties can do zoning is with this quasi-judicial process. And so, um, you are required to do your business in public. And for both sides to have the same ability to talk to you and give you the same information, and for the other side to respond to something the other one said. You can't do that if you go and visit with one of the petitioners in private. And so, um.
By mistake. Is there, is there anything that we can, I mean, do ahead of time before we start? I mean, can a staff member, I mean?
We, we absolutely wanna work with them and have been.
Okay.
I haven't, Scott has, and so we went.
On the new property?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, um, Friday afternoon, myself, um, the building official, um, City Planner, and Fire Chief Moody toward the property.
And that's all I wanted to hear. And that was, that'd be a mistake on my end, and I, I don't think anything was ill-intentioned with it. But I, I think they were concerned before getting the community and everyone stirred up again that we made sure something made sense. But if you guys have looked at it, that's all I really want to see happen. I like to do my business illegally.
The, and I think, and, and I think it's easy to understand.
Quote that, Julie.
It makes sense to do what you did, but I think when you think about it, you're acting like a judge. And, and while it may be expeditious if Jim, as a defense attorney, took the judge out to lunch before the case and, you know, made sure he was abreast, yeah, it's, it's verboten. And, and so, that is as well. And so, um, uh.
That answers my question in regards to Scott.
But we, we recommend, the easiest way, no, the best way to process stuff in El Dorado, especially construction, is start with the code, the engineering department, and so they can give you advice. And, um, how much time and effort you ought to go into a property. And, um, this particular one has issues.
We, we have received an application for a special use permit. And we did do a walkthrough of the property to look at the general condition of it.
Cool. That's all I got.
Is Bill done? I think he was.
We're gonna say he's done.
Okay.
Uh, first thing on my list this evening was there, in the new addition by the golf course, when the street meets 12th Street, there is no stop sign. And I, somebody told me that that can be very dangerous that lives up in that area cause people starting to drive down through that. And somebody has a wreck out there, and we don't have a stop sign, we got a problem. So.
The last time I was in it, it was barricaded. Now I drove around it.
It ain't barricaded anymore.
It isn't? Okay. I can't imagine that we would've planted it without a stop sign, can you? Yeah, no, I don't.
Okay, so you'll look into that?
We'll, we'll get one up.
How many vehicles do we have that's on C and G now?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Half a dozen, probably.
I was gonna say six.
I, um, is that something that we might consider slowing down a little bit with what gas prices are doing? And the reason I say that, you said you were selling like, or Wichita's selling for a buck eighty and Dillon's selling for a dollar seventy-two. I, I'm just wondering if that's something that we should slow down until we see what's actually gonna happen. I, I'd be interested in exactly how much money we put into that project. Just so we understand our costs there.
And, and Brad has gave me the, the overall number, and I got that a week ago. I didn't get a spreadsheet that broke it out, and I thought that's probably what you'd want, so.
Okay, so you're working on it.
I'm working on that. And, um, we, the, the motivation for C and G, um, well, we're selling it for a buck eighty, but we're not paying a buck eighty. And so, today, C and G cost us less than unleaded. And C and G cost a lot less than diesel. And so, um, the vehicles that we have done and are, are doing are big fuel users. So, if it's fifty cents a gallon, it's still fifty cents a gallon, and why wouldn't you save that? And so, I think we use, I think we continue, and especially diesel, which will be two dollars, two dollars a gallon cheaper.
Yeah. I don't want, I don't wanna spend a dime to save a nickel, so.
But, but would you spend fifty cents to save sixty cents?
Well, that's where I wanna see the numbers, I guess is what I'm saying with that kinda thing. And I still go back to, we got a refinery in town, and I don't wanna be the lead in the state for something like that when our biggest employer.
That refinery is not in town.
Well, I mean.
That refinery pays county taxes, no city taxes.
Well, they provide a lot of good jobs for our community.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, but they provide a lot of good.
Oh, I'm not arguing that point.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying there, Dave. I just would like, that's just me. I'd like to slow down here for a little bit and see what develops with that.
It's.
I was looking, I was looking at the 2015 operating budget, that, that big thick book you gave. I just started reading that. And something caught my eye in there that shows that in 2015 that we got a hundred and five thousand for the community market facility. Are, are we planning on spending a hundred thousand dollars in that old building that we just bought?
We're planning on asking for a grant for it. We're not planning on spending general fund money for it. We're planning on asking for a grant.
Okay.
And that's how much we're.
Administration, instead of a hundred and five thousand, it's spent. So we're not gonna spend that if we don't get a grant?
No.
Okay, that was my question there. When, when we bought that, do, do we take on buildings and stuff that we buy? Do, shouldn't that come before the Commission and we vote on it? And maybe vote on a purchase contract? Just a conversation about that. How?
The Commission voted on buying that.
Yeah.
Twenty times.
We talked about it. We didn't have an official.
Hmm, no, you.
Okay, if we decided to buy it, did we talk about for how much?
Yes.
Not to exceed.
I, I would like to see that in the minutes that it read, that we wanted to buy it not to exceed X number of dollars. Cause I don't think we did.
Well, I don't think you were on the board.
Okay, how long ago was that then?
This has been talked about forever.
Well, I.
Yeah, no.
I'd, I'd be interested in seeing that on what day that that was voted on.
Well, we provided that list to you last year when you brought it up.
Okay.
We provided a list of all the times that the Commission told us to move forward on this.
Okay. I just, I'm thinking when we buy a property, there ought to be a, a motion to accept the purchase contract.
You've.
And, and the purchase contract should be written up, subject to a Commission approval. Now, that's just conversation. That way, everybody knows exactly what's going on and for what price. And then everybody's accountable up here for the way they vote on that thing.
I think you're accountable now, and I think you, you voted on it.
Okay, so just show me in the minutes, if we can, cause I, I don't remember that.
Mayor, Pat, you voted on it last year during the sales tax discussion. You voted to approve the sales tax committee's recommendation. You voted on it during the budget process.
The Commission voted on, I don't think you voted on, you voted no, on both the budget and the sales tax.
No, he voted yes on the sales tax, but no on the budget.
Okay.
Okay, and, and.
There you go.
I guess that's for another day conversation. But when we talk about recommendations from the sales tax committee, that's nothing but a recommendation. That comes to us, and then we actually incorporate that. That's our decision, isn't that right?
Right, and you voted no on it in the budget.
Okay, just show me in the minutes, and I'll be happy with that. Herb, I was wondering, since we haven't had a meeting for a long time, can you give us a little year-end report on, you know, what worked last year, what didn't work last year? I noticed like the county moves money into reserves at the end of the year and vote on that. We didn't do anything like that, and I just wondered, did we move any money in reserves? But what, what's 2014 look like? Cause we haven't seen any numbers.
The 2014 isn't closed yet.
When will it be closed?
It'll be closed middle of February.
Okay.
And so, I cannot tell you what we've done yet. And again, um, you never have voted on that. You, you vote on a budget, and so you know that our former government is very different from the county.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
But how many reserve accounts do we have right now?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I'd be interested, how many reserve accounts we got, and how much is in those reserves? Just to understand that part of it.
Well, I don't know that I think we have, well, I mean, we probably do, but it's, mostly it's in the funds. Everything is in the funds.
So we don't have any earmarked reserves, is that what you're saying?
Uh-huh. Because you're, by law, you can only have six percent extra in a budget. So.
Okay.
And I think you, that's kinda that discussion we have, we've had during budget a lot too, where you budget twenty-eight and we spend twenty-four. It's cause there's money in there that is labeled, what do we label it? Do we call it contingency fund, or? So we have, it's that line, it's toward the end of every but fund. We have an equipment reserve fund that we put money in.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we had one of those, and it's, oh, how much is in there for what issues? But if that's not till the middle of February, you guys can work on that. I'm just, that would be something that can be shown in a later date. The other thing that I was hoping for, I was hoping that since we didn't have a meeting on the 12th, that we'd have a special meeting to visit about Lake Debt Reserve. And I guess the rest of the Commission, from what your email said, didn't wanna do that. If, if they don't want to be involved in that, I'd, I think that's important enough. I'd be happy to come over during a lunch hour or something. I'd like to have a meeting. I have some thoughts on that, reading that stuff. And this doesn't have to be on TV, unless you want it on TV, but I'm saying, that's a lot of money there, and we wanna make sure we got a good plan. And with what I'm seeing there, I question that plan. And I, and I just, and I could be wrong. I just wanna have a discussion on that.
Do you think you're gonna hear anything new?
Well, I wonder if you're gonna hear anything new from me.
Am I gonna hear anything new?
Yeah.
I mean, I know how we're, how much our interest we're making. I know how much interest we're paying.
Yeah.
We're making money. We're making more than we're paying, so we're making.
I, I would like to have a discussion on that where that's the only thing we're talking about. We know we're gonna have the meeting, and I will come prepared to discuss that. I mean, we kinda start nibbling at this, and then everybody thinks we forget about it. This is millions of dollars in, you know, in this deal. And my question, you know, what if rates go up? What if they go down? What's wrong with paying the debt off? It's a Lake Debt Reserve. Why don't we pay debt off when it's three point five one, when the twenty, or thirty-year Treasury is at two point four oh?
Cause you're making.
That's the best investment you can make.
Cause you're making.
In this environment.
Because we have some old investments that are better.
Okay, what are they?
Mr. Mayor, they were on the list that you were, that you were.
And I've got them, and what kind of investments are they, Herb?
They're federal home loans.
Okay.
And they're.
How often do they pay you interest?
They're in your budget.
No, how much, how often do they pay you interest?
I don't know that.
Okay.
We, we receive the interest on that when we cash out, when they, when they finish.
In thirty years, we don't get a penny on them till, for thirty years.
We don't wanna touch that money. That money is for the debt that's due in twenty-eight. We don't, the money that we want to pay off is in the water fund, that's a different fund.
This is where I'd like to have a discussion, guys, because I'm telling you that when rates raise, how much are those things worth today if we went to sell them?
That's, I mean, it's a hypothetical that, why do you even talk about it?
If, if rates are at all-time lows and they go up, these things become worth less, and we gotta ride them for thirty years.
We don't want.
And how do we know what's gonna happen in the next thirty years?
Well, what we're doing is we're counting on twenty-eighty. And we know that these investments are making six percent. So, you can be, we could play the market.
You, you're playing the market by what you're doing.
No, I'm absolut, I'm absolutely doing exactly what the plan is.
Okay.
And the plan is that we make six percent.
Okay.
And we're making six percent, we're paying three, we're making almost three.
Yeah.
So, so we're making money. And if we took that money, let's say we sold our investments.
Yes.
And, um.
Took a major loss.
Took a major loss, paid off one of the bonds.
Yeah.
Now we have no money in the bank, and now we're just putting our cash in the bank for a different piece of debt. And so, we've lost three percent interest, we lost it.
Well, well, right now, with us being at all-time lows, this would be a great time to unload one or two of them. And my thought was, part of my thought, was that that one loan is like two million dollars that we're paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year on. And if we took money and paid that off, we could take that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and be putting it on the next note. And I would envision, let's say that we had some tough times, that would be one less bill we gotta pay.
Mr. Mayor, we put more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand towards the, the twenty-eighty note each year.
That'd be an extra hundred and twenty-five you put towards it.
And the, we.
In a different fund.
I'm saying that the two million dollars that we owe today, that we pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year on, if we paid that off, we would not have that payment to make. Not having that payment to make could go on to the next note, or we would have more money to invest if you thought that was the right thing to do, but we wouldn't have that obligation at that point.
We would miss an entire year of investments if we were to try to pay one off right now. We would miss an entire year of investments.
This would be a great time to, to miss it, because rates are bad.
Well, I, I.
No, the effect that that would have on our, what we need to have in twenty-eighty is greater than what we're paying every year on the two million. And that's what I explained in that memo. The effect is greater. We can't, we would take a loss there.
I would, even if, and even, and just, just so you know, and I can give it to the entire Commission, I had this conversation with our financial officer, our finance advisor today. We are always looking to refinance and to do better things. He, he said, "It's, it's foolish to do what you're saying, and there's no reason to do it." He also, we also looked at refinancing.
Why can't I get in that conversation?
You're, you set policy.
Oh, okay, so we stay away, and you guys talk about it, and then you come up here and tell me, and then we can't ever have a good discussion?
Do you not trust me? We have good discussions all the time.
Do I trust you? Times are, Herb, I don't trust you.
You don't, but then again, you, you have the wrong job.
Well.
You need to apply for my job, and then you can do it yourself.
Well, I'm saying that this is, would be a good discussion off-camera to make sure we're making the right decision. And I made the list of the questions that I asked for, and I didn't, you know, get that. And, you know, a copy of our Lake Debt Reserve policy. Who is our investment advisor? How was he selected? How does he get paid? You know, those are the kinda things that I just find interesting.
And I think if we've got those questions, and, or, you know, have them prepared, wanna have that dialogue, doing a quick lunch meeting would be more appropriate.
That's what I like.
Than getting into it all now without everyone being prepared, is my.
I agree with you.
Thought on all of that.
Just, I'd like to have a luncheon with the guy, Herb, is what I like to do.
And, and.
Hell, I'll even buy the two of you lunch.
We had.
Thank you.
We even had the guy, the investment guy here for you when you told us to. And then you didn't ask him any questions. So, I mean, you've had opportunity, and you've been given the information, and that's the frustrating part to us.
I've seen it, and that's why I wanna talk. That's why I want the discussion.
But, but you've seen it, and, and.
And he's saying.
And you're not perceiving it. You're not understanding it.
And he's saying he's got some new thoughts, and so let's just bet some new thoughts over a lunch.
Let's have a lunch, and we'll talk about it. That's what I.
Can I go back to my new business real quick? No, sorry.
If the, all we need from you, Mr. Mayor, to have this meeting is agreement amongst the. If the, all we need from you, Mr. Mayor, to have this meeting is agreement amongst the commission, and we don't have that right now. We have only received the request from you, and no one else has agreed to have the meeting, so you have to get someone else to back in, or two other people to back in.
So as we look down the list, all I'm asking for is to have a discussion with our financial advisor on where we're at and what the plan is, and my thoughts into that process.
And you were asking for a work session?
I was asking for a work session so that everybody could be present to make it legal. That was the reason for that.
I just need an agreement amongst the commission, that's all I'm waiting for.
Okay.
The, we are willing to bring whatever you need, I just need...
Now, what I would tell you, gentlemen, is if you guys ever requested a special work session, no matter what the issue, I would do it.
Okay, but I have, so if we have a work session...
Yes.
With our financial advisor.
Yes.
And after the work session, three of us agree that he knows what he's talking about, that's the end of it.
I agree with that.
That's the end of it.
Really? You really are going to agree to it?
That's the end of it, you're not going to bring it up again.
It takes three, and that's the way the votes go?
No, that isn't what I said. If three of us are agreed with what he says, and that's the direction we need to go, then we're done talking about it, correct? That's a yes or no question.
That's three people saying that.
How about four? How about a four to one?
Okay.
Would you agree that then we probably not hash it over again?
I'd go with that.
Why, why does that take a supermajority? Because I said it.
I, guys, I just want to discuss, if that's all I'm...
I just want my question answered.
Okay.
By the time we discuss having this discussion, we could probably... So I say let's plan on having this discussion.
Here's what I'd like to do, Mike.
Here we go.
Get your questions that you want answered, which, if that's what they are, that's what, get them to whoever it is, okay? I agree that they need to answer your questions, so you got one vote, that they should answer the questions, okay? If I got two more people up here to vote with it...
I will vote with that.
Then you'll get your questions answered with a consensus of three. If not, all I can say is I've tried to do everything I can. I'm for your meeting, if you want to meet with them for lunch, and Herb and them, I'm all for that. I think that's fine, I don't have a problem, I'm good with that, I vote for that. So now it's these three guys will determine whether that meeting, because she needs a consensus of three.
You got three.
I have heard Chase.
I have a question.
Chase and the mayor.
Okay, that's three.
I have a question.
That's your three.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't...
What's the problem with having Tom come to a commission meeting and having this discussion on camera so that everyone can understand the reality of what's happening with our investments?
Nothing.
Yeah, and I...
I mean, we had, and it isn't Tom, Tom is our refinance guy generally, and he does, we work with him, he's our financial advisor. Our investment guy is not Tom, it's, we actually went, did RFQs, interviewed people, and selected this person based on RFQs. And so that's how we accomplished this, per our procurement policy, that's how we did it. He has said he'd come over anytime, and he'd absolutely come, so to your point, nothing, he has come to this meeting before last month, November, December, and was ready to take questions a month ago at this meeting in this chamber. So you can do...
Well, he was very busy that night, I remember him standing back here. It's a lot easier, guys, to sit at a table and look across the table at somebody and not be on camera while these discussions go on. That's my opinion. Now, to be honest with you, now, if we can line up here and everybody look one direction and put on a dog and pony show, that's something else. I just want to make sure we're doing the right things, that's all I'm asking.
So, so by that logic, having them come here, having that same financial advisor come here and present the information to us so that everybody in the community understands what's going on as a dog and pony show, but to sit down over lunches... I think the mayor was trying to extend, you know, and us having a conversation, we can vet some of these issues and not have to do this all like this in a commission meeting, which I would appreciate, you know, not to hide anything, but there's just a lot of things to vet.
I just want to make sure, Chase, that the right information's getting out to the public, because I'm certain that it's not...
And us doing it this way isn't the best way to do it, and that's why I think having a meeting where we can discuss those things and then come to the public would probably be the most appropriate thing to do.
And I want to be able to look at the appropriation statement and see an entrust card for lunch for you, you and the financial and Tammy, and I can question it then.
Okay.
Okay? And the problem of it is, is then it's done, Mike, you'll get your answers.
That's what I'm looking for.
But remember, it takes a commission to make a change.
And that's...
And, and you can have a problem, come to us, talk about the problem, and if we feel that it's as big a problem as you, we'll probably agree with you. If we feel that you're, you're being the dog and pony show and we're not, then we're not going to vote with you.
I understand.
Okay? Because we have addressed this issue a lot in the last two years. And over the last eight years, I think I've almost been able to understand the whole lake debt situation. It's not an easy animal to understand, but, you know, have your, have the lunch, get your questions answered so that you're at ease of mind.
That's all I'm asking.
And to be fair, I think, I mean, I, I'm, I could say, I have full faith in staff, but you're claiming that you have new ideas on your end and thoughts, and so I'm willing to hear those this time, and then from there we go.
I mean, I would want the same, I would want the same...
Twenty minutes discussing if we're going to have a meeting.
Same opportunity, if I had a idea that was really driving me, and I kind of didn't go about it right, and I just would like to have the opportunity. So I'm giving you the opportunity.
So do we need to schedule a work session so that multiple people, so that we can all sit in and understand this, or...
Well, if two of you can go, if three of us show, we have to have a special meeting, correct?
Yeah, but we publish them all the time, that's no big deal.
It's up to you guys, whether you want to make it special or have a dinner for Mike.
Either way, I'm happy.
Well, I'm happy to sit in on the conversation.
Yeah, duh.
So let's, three sitting in?
You got to have four.
For a meeting.
For a meeting. Got to have four for a meeting.
If not, we're just hanging out.
You can't have two.
And we're not voting on anything at this meeting, correct? A special meeting, so we're just looking for information. Okay.
Can I go back to my new business?
I will send out another email asking for dates again, so if you all reply, we'll set them up.
Okay. Just real quickly, I wanted to add to the election and new business. We talked about this at league, but if staff could make, and I know you do some things, but just a reminder, maybe we can amp it a little bit, but with this election, really trying to put some education out there in regards to our form of government and how we do business and what our responsibilities are. Because I think, of course, the common thing that we get, you know, or I get a lot of, is people think that we deal with the day-to-day issues, and that's not what our job is. And so I think maybe if, in conjunction with all that, maybe Julie can help us out, doing a little bit of education would serve our community and everyone in a positive way. That's all. Thanks.
That's all I got, Herb.
I wanted to tell you that, as I mentioned in the manager's report, the Butler County Commission did discuss the inter-local agreement they have with the City of El Dorado and the City of Augusta today over planning zoning three-mile radius. There is interest on the county commission part to redo it, and what was discussed today was actually to invert the current process, whereas we're advisory to them, in that they will make the ultimate decision. We're going to go, we'll present it again to them. We cited the problems in the West Industrial Park is a good example of our front door being controlled by the county, and the city having to be the enforcement arm, and they've never done anything out there, and I suspect, I don't know how much time they can go out there, because there's half a dozen companies out there violating county regulations. I don't think we've ever got them to even try to enforce their conditional use permits, they have people operating without conditional use permits, they have people operating, and so we think we have better tools and more desire to enforce it. And I think one of the other questions, it's almost like they think they only represent unincorporated Butler County.
Instead of all of Butler County, instead of cities.
Instead of thinking, they represent the City of El Dorado, I mean, we're probably the biggest number of constituents that either Mike or Ed have.
And I think today at their meeting, that that did get brought up, Herb, and they discussed a little bit about, to remind all of them amongst themselves that they represent, the majority of the residents, they represent our city residents, so they made that clear. They tried to get that point across, because I think there was a few that weren't thinking in that manner.
That's all I have.
I had one other thing I forgot about, guys. Out on West Central, those chips on the cement is getting bad.
Yes, it is.
So hopefully, we got that on the agenda, because I'm telling you, it just...
We've talked, we noticed it last year, and...
Yeah, really long before that, we did get awarded Clink funding, Clink funding to improve that. The question is, when you deal with concrete, when concrete fails, it gets very expensive to repair, so...
Would bonding cover that at all, Scott? That was a state deal.
That was a state project.
They only warranty stuff for a year.
Yeah, KDOT doesn't warranty your bond in either projects. But that's, that's a difficult one, we're struggling with right now, finding the appropriate means to, to make it a road that can function for years to come, and not just be a temporary fix that we're putting a lot of money into. Have that, the failure of that aggregate at all those joints, it's just blowing apart. And joint repair methods would end up taking the majority of a panel out, when there's so many of those failure points, and where do you really stop? So it's a tough one, and we're trying to figure out how to get it done and where the funding's going to come from.
But we did put temporary hotmat in, I mean, not cold-mex in them last weekend, in fact, I think we even used a better grade, hoping that it'd last longer.
And just, and probably two years before that, we hired a contractor to do some thin depth joint repair with epoxy. That's some of the worst ones then, just, it's a temporary patch, and those have failed since, so...
So what are we going to do?
That's what we're trying to figure out right now. I can't tell you, the state did agree to give us some funding as part of our Clink, up to $200,000.
Okay.
But that doesn't necessarily go very far when you're, when you're thinking the way I'm thinking about how we repair it.
And I think you've all probably seen roads that, they go in and cut out the joint, re, put in a new joint, so it's saw cut, concrete, so it's time, well, they did on 254 for the west.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate that only being 20, 20-plus years old. KDOT did do some joint repair in a thin lift, like a Nova chip on the rest of 254, west of Boyer. It seems to be holding up okay, that, that's not necessarily a good fix when we get into our urban setting with curb and gutters. But we're looking at it, so bear with us.
Okay. Well, that's our approach to the city. Might have nice trees, but terrible roads, so that's pretty important, to come up with something. Okay, we ready for the next agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Executive session?
Yes, sir.
Who wants to make a motion?
How long do we need?
We don't need...
Twenty minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and matters relating to non-elected personnel, and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the city commission room at 9:50, 9:50 PM.
Second.
Is that right?
Yeah. Is that long enough? Okay.
It's twenty minutes.
All right. Got a motion, a second, and discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, the commission is back from executive session, and we don't have any motions to make as anything regards to what was in there, so...
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have three seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and have a good week.